Call the board. I'm just so sorry, I have to ask right now. All right, so we're going to call this meeting to order for Monday, December 16th. Call the roll please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Annie So. Here, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the highest court of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have you heard what the agenda has presented?
Is it move?
Second.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Afterward.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Annie So. Yes. Right, and now we will have honors.
Thank you, Mrs. So. Tonight we have a very special presentation, but before we get into the presentation, like many great teams, Centerville City Schools has a number of great teams inside the organization. And one of our fantastic teams is our treasures office staff, so all of them are here tonight. I'd like to ask them to come up and maybe stand up here behind the podium.
No.
If they would do that for me, please. So, come on up, folks. So these fantastic ladies do a great job up in the treasures office, and they're part of a great team. Unfortunately, this past September, we lost a great team member, Mitch Beederman, our treasurer. And tonight, we have Carl Keith, the Montgomery County Auditor, who's going to make a special presentation. And we have Mitch's wife, Lisa Beederman. So Lisa, if you'd come up also, we'd appreciate that too. So, Mr. Carl Keith.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Thank you, members of school board. I'm so happy to be here with you this evening, and I will say, you know, the weather's a little dicey out there. I was at an event before I came here with the county engineer. The county engineer tells you to be careful out there. You know you better, you know you're in trouble, right? I want to talk just for a moment about a man by the name of Jesse Haynes, or some people call him Jess Haynes, some people call him Pop Haynes, also known as Pop Haynes. Jess Haynes was born in Montgomery County, grew up in Phillipsburg, and became a major league baseball pitcher. Pitched for the St. Louis Cardinals, had the distinction of pitching in a number of World Series games. He had the distinction of pitching against the New York Yankees in the 20s, and did on occasion strike out Babe Ruth. He became a Hall of Famer, Hall of Fame baseball player. And then, when he retired, he moved back to Montgomery County and ran for the office of county auditor. I don't know, major league baseball player, Hall of Famer, county auditor, I think it all goes together, doesn't it? Something like that. He had the distinction, and has the distinction, of being the longest-serving county auditor in Montgomery County history. He served as county auditor for 28 years. And of course, over the course of 28 years, he saw a lot of changes and a lot of changes in technology and law and growth in the county. So a few years ago, we decided in the auditor's office to name an award after Jess Haynes, called the Jess Haynes Award. And we present this each year to a finance official in the county who has been nominated by one of his peers, and who exemplifies integrity and hard work, and helps to recognize the tireless efforts and work, behind-the-scenes work, that the folks in, and working in finance and in our organizations do each year. We presented this award, announced the presentation of this award on Friday at our annual update meeting with local officials. And this year, one of the recipients of our award was Mitch Beederman. And so it's, again, I don't need to tell you all what a great person Mitch was, and how many years that he worked both in Centerville and other school districts as well, and what a great job that he did. I know in our dealings with him in the auditor's office, he was always the ultimate professional, and he was a pleasure to work with. He was, he had lots of energy. He had lots of energy. So he kept us on our toes at times, kept us on our toes at times. But it was a real loss, but on the other hand, we were, I think, so fortunate to have known him, and so fortunate to have, have been able to have experienced his leadership and his dedication to local government finance. And so I'm very happy to be here this evening. Thank you for inviting me. And I'd like to present to Lisa this plaque for the recognizing Mitch as the winner of the Jesse Haynes Award.
Next, I have the honor of presenting the next award. I'd like a president of our Board of Education. This is Annie So up here, and Megan, stand to my right if you would. First of all, it has always been kind of a custom or a tradition for us here in Centerville City Schools, when a person has served their first term as board president, we always give them a commemorative gavel that they can then take and keep this in memory of the first year that they've been a board president. So we have an engraving on this gavel that we're going to give to Annie tonight for being president of the Board of Education, and it also has the dates that she served as a board member for the last four years. So first of all, I'd like to give this to you and congratulate you on for that.
Thank you.
So thank you. Again, we want to thank you for your years of service and leadership as being board of the president, or president of the Board of Education. And again, I always like to share with individuals and the public that board members, and especially board presidents, spend a lot of time behind the scenes, taking questions and dealing with different issues, and working with the school district, and spending numerous hours that people don't see that they're involved with. So we appreciate your leadership this year and everything that you did. The second thing I'd like to give you is, this is from the entire staff and students of Centerville City Schools. We hope that, we know you're relocating, and we hope that you'll be able to use that down the road to help enjoy some time with your family and your husband and everything like that. So again, we appreciate your leadership and your tenure as a board member, and we thank you very much. So, thank you.
I have to say goodbye, and so I do have a little bit of a speech. It's not nearly as long as the graduation speech I deliver, but I think it'd be better if I waited till the end because I'm going to fall apart. So it'd be better if I keep it together for the meeting, and then I'll read my little speech to you for goodbye. Thank you so much.
Hey, Annie.
Oh.
The board, the board also would like to present you with a little something. I'm trying to get that heart beating. So this is from the board. You know, speaking for the board, it's pretty effective. Annie's obviously been four years now, and really has contributed a lot to this board, as every single one of the students out here knows. This was her idea to get the student reps on there. She's worked with them diligently over these years, and just like Mitch, Annie's very enthusiastic. And we will miss you, and just congratulations on the move. She's going to Charleston, South Carolina, which is a great, great city, so we'll see her. I have a place down there, so I'm going to get to see her a little bit more down there. But Annie, thank you so much.
All right. Okay. Board of Education, let's see the reports, Mrs. Sparks.
Nothing.
Okay. Got nothing. It's a separate. All right, students.
Hello, I'm Jacob Myers, and I'm a senior at Centerville High School. Past couple of weeks, we've been conducting candy comments at the middle schools for the first time ever. We went to Tower Heights and Magzik. We're planning to go to Watts after the new year. The major themes that we've seen from them go along with the high school. We've seen mental health come up at the middle schools. We've also seen dress code come up and school safety. So we're going to work with administration to make sure they're aware of all the concerns that we've seen at class over grades.
So after meetings with Mrs. Westendorf and Mr. Carroll, we've decided to try to put together something to try and combat the issues that the middle schoolers have been seeing, and try to improve on them so that they can be more happy and satisfied.
Hello, I'm Mohamed Stoffman, I'm a sophomore, and recently, we've been working on a book program initiative to supply low-income students with in-class and summer reading books where, from before they were able to access, excuse me, were able to access those books. And we've been working closely, I've been working closely with Mrs. So and Mrs. Dahl, and from there, we're going to try to have some sort of recycle, some sort of recycling aspect to it where older kids kind of pass down their books, and from there, we're going to get excited. Thank you.
Hi, we're trying to get a meeting with Mrs. McGuire, which will hopefully happen soon, as well as a meeting after the new year with the West Carrollton kids who are adding student representatives to their board. And since we have some experience with it here, to get help from out and make the transition go smoothly.
Hello, I'm Madison Ernest, and I'm a senior here at Centerville High School. And I've been working the past couple of months with Mrs. So, Dr. Rohr, Mr. Carroll, and Mrs. Myers to develop a quick flowchart poster for students with any mental health issues, so that they can quickly glance at all of the resources that our high school provides for them, what they can do for them, and two resources, the nurse and our hotline if they are in need of like a quick crisis, like resource. So I'm very happy to announce that it is extremely close to being finished and posted around the school, so a copy will be sent out soon. Thank you.
Okay, so now it's time for our goodbye to our great board president. So we'll start off with the first gift, which we also got you a gavel, and we all signed it, so now you have two.
Can I just say a quick word?
Yes, you come on over here. Because you always need two gavels in your life, in case one wears out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So we have a little gift basket. So we've had an ongoing joke this year that Miss So has taken up the stereotype of a visco girl. So we have, to lighten the humor a little bit, we got her some scrunchies and a couple hydroplastics, some Starbucks to kind of lighten the mood, but now on a more like loving note and thank you full note, me making a binder, because I love my binders. We all wrote thank you notes to Miss So, all the past reps, we all wrote thank you notes, and they're all in this binder. We don't want to read them because we'll all start tearing up. There's also some memories, some big memories that took place last year, like we have the original board minutes from the West Carrollton meeting when we proposed our idea to the West Carrollton board, and we have some pictures from the state board presentation. So from the bottom of my hearts, and I know all the past reps, we just want to thank you so much for everything, all the opportunities you've given us, and this school district for helping everyone in all your service. Thank you.
So now, if I turn for this a second. I love these kids so much, and I see Julia, and I see Megan out there, my first and second generation that I call my kids. This isn't my goodbye speech, but I just have to say that it has been such a privilege to work with these students. They are future leaders, they're stakeholders of this district, and they are so full of energy, I can't keep up half the time. And this basket, they're still going to have to explain to me what half the things mean in it. So one of the things that I have seen these kids do from start to finish each year is that they grow. And I can't take credit for that, but it's just kind of a mama bear's pride to see how these kids have grown. From the first group, it was, Megan can attest to this, it was touch and go, we were trying to find our feet. We had great support, Mr. Carroll was super supportive as well, and he just kind of let us go with things. And leaps and bounds, they started candy and comments, and because of candy and comments, which I'll talk about a little bit later, there's been so many amazing things that have happened. And I'm sorry, had I known that Megan and Julia would be here. But because of our crazy candy and comments this year, it's been a little wacky. My favorite was presented to me today that said, "We need more naps with pillows and blankets," which was for middle schoolers, which I thought, "You already get to start school later in the day." So I'm always harping to them when we meet, and I meet them for lunch. Julia can attest to this, I was always asking, "So what's in your lunch, and what are you eating today?" And so, here's a candy and a comment. You get some candy, and a gift card from proper services. You can always leave something. And that's what I'm doing. And I need to give hats off to Ben Campbell, who's not here this evening. I spoke about it at the work session, that Ben created a mental health analysis for students for the district that he's going to present. I spoke to Mr. Carroll about it a while ago, and he did a really good job. He's insightful, he's way smarter than I am, for sure. I had to read it three times. It just is really amazing what these kids are capable of doing. So I thank you so much for supporting them, and I'm going to turn them over to you, and I'm going to keep in touch, and hopefully see them continue to grow that we can imagine. Thank you. Thanks, you guys. Okay. Great. Hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides us a convenient opportunity for public comment before any official action is taken. The board president will ask if anyone would like to address the board. Adults, because you're requested to address the board from the podium, please state your name and address. And students, oh, we need to state their names. We ask that all who speak to the other comments to know more than three minutes as the board does have pre-scheduled reports and action items on the agenda. The board will listen to all who speak, but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. Individual board members may be contacted for a set meeting appointment, and written correspondence may be mailed to the board office. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Okay, moving along, and have the treasurer's report.
First of all, honors and student reps, so Dr. Henderson, I think we need to look at rearranging the agenda.
Well, we're great overall, the union.
I have a very brief report tonight. You heard Mr. Keith mention the Friday meeting with the auditor's office update, so I have just a few stats that I'm just going to verbally give to you, as I said, this meeting was just on Friday. In January, I'm going to probably put something more formal together in terms of some, and then be more Centerville specific. Part of the report talked about the tornado damage throughout the county. There were 4,434 damaged parcels throughout the county, and that totaled over $46 million in lost property value throughout the county just from that one event. One, another item that was notable is the new construction. There's $38 million of residential construction just in Washington Township alone. Washington Township and our district had 54% of all the new residential construction in the area in the last year so far. So that was, that was definitely a highlight. Property values for 2020 has increased by 1%. That's pretty typical for a year that's not a reappraisal or a triennial update, and so there was a 1% increase countywide, and Centerville also saw a 1% increase as well. Next year, 2020, is a reappraisal year. I'm expecting, based on home sales, for it to be very large. I know Miami County was 16% in terms of an update. Many of the surrounding counties were in double digits, 10 and 12, 11% in the surrounding areas. And so they're out assessing properties now, and finalizing some of that data that'll be, people will be receiving their updates come spring and into the early summer, so there will be probably a pretty significant increase in property values for 2020. So that's it for tonight. I just wanted to mention a few of those highlights, and like I said, I'll put something more detailed together for January. Thank you.
And just, again, just to reiterate, just because property values are going up, again, that does not mean the school is going to get any more money because of the rollback, correct?
That's correct.
So we may be paying more taxes because the assessed values are going up, but the schools, because of the rollback, gets no more money.
That's correct.
So as you see your tax bills going up, it's not coming to us anymore.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, we are going to, is that it? We're good? All right, for treasurer's recommendations, we're going to consider approving the November 2019 financial statements, the monthly financial report, the fund activity report, appropriations report, general funding spending report, the general fund summary, general fund summary comparison, purchase orders included in statement number seven approved by administration, then and now certified by the treasurer and supported by the board resolution totaling $175,689.95. Is that good? Call the roll please. Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Annie So. Yes. All right, on a side note, it's always funny to watch me say the numbers in the right order. All right, consider a resolution to authorize a treasurer request to advance payment of taxes when available during 2020.
Is it move?
Second.
Call the roll please. Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Annie So. Yes. And now we will have the superintendent's recommendations. Okay, all raised. Superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificate of personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule B for the reasons and on the dates given.
Is it move?
Second.
All roll please. Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Annie So. Yes. Before we go into further, I just have something I want to share. All right, well, for the record, as I mentioned, the reason, four years now I've dressed up, and I put on mascara for all of these meetings, and tonight, as I was going through papers earlier this month, going through papers to get things ready to move, which has been really hard, I came across my flyer, and I had this shirt on. So I thought, I started my term with this white shirt on, and I'm going to end it. So I waited to the very end because I knew this was going to be hard, and it's even harder because my hand is out there. Leaving after this week has been a little difficult because my journey of saying goodbye starts tonight. It'll be one of many if I start the transition on my move. I've always wanted a farm, but I didn't think I'd be making so far out of the district to have one. I'm not one for goodbyes, and I tend to skirt out of them with the "see you later." It's so hard to comprehend that four years has flown by so quickly. Craig and I moved here almost 20 years ago. We chose Centerville because of the school district. I really wanted to move back to my hometown of Haragon, but the schools were not in good shape. Never in a million years would I have ever thought that I would be representing the district as a board of education member, and it has been an honor. To be able to hand both of my kids their diplomas along with their friends, and even speak at Anna's graduation was an absolute thrill, truly one of the highlights of a board member. I would have never even thought about being on the board had our beloved pediatrician and family friend not prodded me along. "You should run for the board," Dr. Rohr would say when I would pop in with Josh or Anna for an appointment. "We're just here because I have no prescriptive authority and the girl has an infection." Besides, "I'm fine as a parent volunteer," I would say. This went on for quite some time until they wore me down. After years as a room mom, PTO president, both at Weller and Tower, and just volunteering whatever the call was heeded, whether it was a cross or ban, whatever was needed, I would, I finally said, "Okay, what do I need to do?" "Just go get some signatures," he said. There's a lot of signatures here. And so I did, and I ran my campaign on "I'm a parent, not a politician," which was an accidental slogan, when a snarky lady who I approached to ask if she would sign my page said, "What are you going to do for me?" And I said, "I'm just a parent, not a politician," and it stuck. Actually, I don't think any of us on the board can claim we're politicians. We are parents who care about our schools and community, and the two go hand in hand. After I was elected, I remember saying to Dr. Rohr, "Now what? The first year is easy," he said. "You just sit there and quietly take it all in. There's a lot to learn." Well, we all know that is funny, and I'm forever thankful to our beloved Mitch Beederman, who inherits, who inherited each new member, where he patiently would sit next to you and would whisper explanations to terms and various budget line items, et cetera. I'll be forever grateful, and after I first met with Mitch, he added graphs and pie charts, which made it, which made so much more sense from a global perspective. Thanks to Mitch, thank you Mitch. I've been able to casually read up on the school district where I'll be moving to. I promise I'm not going to get involved, I'm just going to be a spectator. But I'm, I was able to at least make a little bit of picture of what's going on with their money, and even did it without a pie chart. I have to give kudos to Dr. Henderson, as I'm sure he had no idea what he was getting with me. I met with him after I was elected, and he very patiently answered all of my questions and didn't throw me out of his office. I remember saying, "Dr. Henderson, who does the website? As a parent in this district, it's hard to navigate at times and seems to need a revamp." I'm totally paraphrasing, but. He very calmly, in his Dr. Henderson-like fashion, said, "I do." I quickly rebounded with, "But you're the superintendent, you're running the school district. All is well at Enzwell, and Dr. Henderson is still doing a great job as superintendent, and we have Sarah Manning the website." I would be remiss if I didn't thank the most important people of this district, the teachers and staff who daily contact with students. As a parent of two children who attended Centerville City Schools from start to finish, let me say thank you. I was a room mom for many years, and that was not, there was not one time that I left a classroom and did not comment. There has got to be a chair in heaven for teachers. Get me an ER full of sick or traumatically injured kids, and I'm your girl. 24 healthy kids in a classroom, no way, hands down, teachers are my heroes. To the administrative team, you are the behind-the-scenes team that keeps this train on the track, the steam behind the wheels. I love this, I love that this district works cohesively and sets an example to other districts. If only, if only one rated this district on test scores, then I would vehemently say, you have no idea what goes into the functionality of a school district, and those test scores are driven by people who are not educators, who make up the rules as they go along, and should render the schools back to the district level. No, I'm not a politician. Remember, I'm just a parent, but I also am a staunch advocate for standing up for what is right. Hats off to all of you, and thank you for your patience with my questions and for always providing intricate answers. Mr. Wesley, thank you a million times over for helping the students with their Elks Twin Green project to get the recycling containers up and running. And Mr. Yux, I will forever miss hello, Mr. Yux, and he would say hello, Mrs. So. And now the hardest part. The student board of ed reps, you are truly my kids, and I cherish all three generations of you, but I must say, I think I've learned just as much from you as you did from me. I've enjoyed being your mentor, and as the stakeholders of your school district, you are doing wonderful things. When Elliot, Megan, and Siri started as the first reps, it was touch and go, and we were finding our way. Candies and comments was born during this time, and it has continued to thrive. From information you have obtained, we have done many things. The creation of the safety hotline poster was a plus that came from the artwork of talented student Ally Fitzharris. Comments obtained from both high school and middle school regarding safety, bullying, and mental health have led to a variety of things, and don't forget, we've adopted the Sandy Hope Promise, and the program with, it starts with hello. To Madison's mental health crisis guideline and directing students on how to ask for help in acute situations, you saw a task and you took it on. The district sees that mental health truly is a crisis, and hiring mental health counselors a few years ago was a much-needed addition to the guidance counselors. You continue to explore and advocate for your peers in making your school environment all that it can be. Presenting at the state board of ed meeting last May was certainly a highlight, and you can be proud of how you're all viewed and respected. I was like a proud mama bear watching her cubs, and you made Centerville proud. The list is endless, and I challenge you to keep going. You are truly the leaders of our future, and I see good things in each and every one of you. You truly are my kids, and I'm going to miss you so much. I'm especially going to miss our roundtable discussions of laughter and hearing, "Oh, Mrs. So," with eyes rolling when you're in all the term I am not familiar with, such as this. To the board, I thank you. I wish you the very best as the new year approaches, and I know that there are many good things on the horizon. Thank you. All right, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22 G1, I hereby move the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and employ of this school district. No other business will be conducted except to come out of this session, the executive session, to adjourn.
Is it move?
Second.
Call the roll please. Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Annie So. Yes. Thank you.